Good evening and welcome. I'd like to call the order to Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors work session. Tuesday, August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, three thirty P. M., Board Meeting Room Thirty-nine Bank Street, Southeast Chatham, Virginia. Ms. McClusser, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Ingram?
Present.
Ms. Eames?
Present.
Mr. Scares?
Here.
Mr. Tucker?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Here.
Mr. Dudley?
Present.
Mr. Dalton?
Here. Moving to item three, agenda items to be added. Are there any items to be added?
No, sir.
No, sir. Thank you. Moving to item four, approval of the agenda. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Ingram. Second?
I'll second.
Second, Ms. Eames. Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? If not, we're ready to vote.
One more vote.
Everybody come through?
Yep.
You good? All right. Motion carries. Thank you. For the citizens' convenience, all work sessions and committee meetings are now being recorded and can be viewed on the same YouTube location as the Board of Supervisors business meetings. Please remember that the board's work sessions are designed for internal board and county staff, communication, discussion, and work. It is not a question-and-answer session with the audience. Accordingly, during the work session, no questions or comments from the audience will be entertained. Respectfully, any outburst or disorderly conduct from the audience will not be tolerated and may result in the defendant's person removal from the work session. As a reminder, all county citizens and ill-appropriate parties are designated by the board's bylaws or permitted to make comments under hearing of the citizens' sections of the night's business meeting. Moving to item five A, the county I D. A. Economic Development Strategy Plan's co-presentation is Mr. Fawcett. Good evening, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Dalton. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Yes, sir.
Chair Dalton and Vice Chair Dudley and esteemed members of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors, on behalf of your county's I D. A. I thank you for this opportunity to extend an invitation to you to join us in creating an economic development strategic success plan that leverages Pennsylvania County's historic strengths, maximizes our current momentum, and creates a prosperous, high-quality-of-life future for all of our citizenry. I bring you this invitation at the encouragement of Chair Dalton and Vice Chair Dudley, after my Vice Chair John Daniel and I met with them recently to discuss this invitation in greater depth. As you know, Pennsylvania County is a vital part of an economic development partnership of regional cooperation. It's the envy of many in our Commonwealth. You, our local elected representatives, have led us well, and we thank you for combining our assets and resources in partnership with the city of Danville. We see that in the various RIFAs that are even today catapulting economic growth in our region. To further capitalize on this regional cooperation and prepare for future growth, your appointed I D. A. was approached recently about partnering with the city of Danville, Southern Virginia Regional Alliance, and the Danville Regional Foundation in a broader regional economic development plan. We welcome this collaborative venture and anticipate great outcomes for the larger region. With this invitation as a springboard, we, the I D. A. of Pennsylvania County, invite you, the Board of Supervisors, to join us in creating what we're calling a uniquely Pennsylvania County economic development plan. While we celebrate the immense value gained from regional cooperation, we see the needs and assets of Pennsylvania County as quite different from those in the city of Danville. We collaborate with our friends to the south based on our mutual interests. However, we recognize that Pennsylvania County is quite unique and therefore deserving of a strategic economic plan of her own. Citizens of Pennsylvania County bring their own special talents and assets to economic development, and we intend to celebrate and capitalize on these to the benefit of our residents directly. Pennsylvania County is large, nine hundred and seventy-eight square miles, the largest county in land areas in the Commonwealth, and encompasses many different, what we like to call, microeconomies, each with their own unique needs for infrastructure, suppliers, transportation, and workforce. The I D. A. believes these microeconomies must be addressed individually and still collectively. A regional plan done in cooperation with the city of Danville will potentially overlook the acres of diamonds buried among the rolling lush mountains, the verdant fertile farmlands, and small-town charms we call home. This I D. A.-driven Strategic Economic Development Plan will coordinate with and advantage the larger regional plan. However, its focus is on Pennsylvania County and our uniqueness. Therefore, our goal is to craft a unique vision for Pennsylvania County's future, wisely and proactively taking advantage of growth and economic development successes that are likely to come to the county while preserving the essential qualities we regard so dearly. Now, what might this plan focus on? Initial conversations have included and yet will extend beyond the following. First, opportunities to expand and enhance agriculture and forestry by supporting value-added enterprises, including agribusiness, agritourism, and historic tourism. Second, create wise growth from current assets with an emphasis on lively and vibrant towns and main streets, small business development, and workforce-relevant housing while maintaining the green spaces of our rural areas. Third, identify strategic opportunities to promote wise and managed growth and economic development in various areas of Pennsylvania County, including but not limited to the southwest corner of the county, especially between Berry Hill and the Danville city limits, including Brosville, the northern county towns of Chatham, Gretna, and Hurt, the areas around Smith Mountain and Leesville Lakes, the Mount Herman Route Forty-one corridor, the Blair's Highway Twenty-nine area, agricultural lands east of Highway Twenty-nine, and the Old Dominion Agricultural Complex and surrounding property. This strategic economic development plan will take into account existing and potential future infrastructure, commuting patterns and traffic logistics, accessibility, as well as other necessities like broadband internet, water, and sewer. Fourth, identify strategies and implement tactics that attract and retain top talent as tax-paying citizens and shapers of our rural culture. The driving question here is, how do we reverse the talent drain of young people we have raised and educated in our communities and schools and attract still others who desire the high quality of life that you and I enjoy as citizens of Pennsylvania County? This work by necessity considers many quality-of-life factors, including workforce development, schools and education opportunities, workforce housing availability and affordability, childcare availability and affordability, community gathering places like retail shops, restaurants, breweries, coffee shops, et cetera. This year is my third as chair of the I D. A. I thank you for the opportunity and specifically he who appointed me, Bob Warren. I have attempted each year with three different chairs to create a better, more strategic alliance between our boards. It is my heartfelt desire that our critical mass of influence and relationships over those three years have led to this important time in the life of our county, a county that we all love dearly and a time where we can set aside our differences and unite around the goal of a strategic, wise, and preferred future for all of our citizens. The I D. A. invites each of you individually and as a board collectively to join us in this process. It is our stated intention to fund this uniquely Pennsylvania County Strategic Economic Development Plan from our financial accounts. Please note that our funds are not taxpayer dollars, but dollars produced from business relationships struck with new local businesses that created better-paying jobs with a high quality of life for our citizens. We leverage these assets rather than levy more taxes. Further, it is our plan to fund the Economic Development Success Plan without any funding from the Danville Regional Foundation, who will help fund the regional plan, or the Tobacco Commission, who, to my knowledge, will not fund any of these plans. We, the I D. A., fund this uniquely Pennsylvania County economic development planning process completely. We consider this a worthy cause for reinvestment, as together we secure a viable economic future for our seniors of today and, yes, our children's children. Today, I ask nothing of you, my friends, other than your support and later your participation as a stakeholder in this important process. Once we secure the scope of work and select consultants to help us achieve this worthy goal, we will invite you to participate and represent your distinguished constituency's interests. We esteem each of you so very highly. Value your input on behalf of those who elected you. We, as your volunteer-appointed I D. A. board, are privileged to serve you, our Board of Supervisors, as well as our neighbors and friends as fellow citizens of Pennsylvania County. Thank you for your time, your interest, and your attention, and I'm pleased to receive your questions and comments at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Fawcett? Comments?
You got anything, bud?
Did they go to sleep, Darrell, or did I do that good a job? You done a good job.
I have one, if you don't mind.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Terrell.
Dr. Fawcett, what would you like to see as the next step to implement this strategy?
Thank you for that question, Mr. Terrell. We are working through a scope of work. We received some initial funding estimates from our consultants. They're going to be securing some subcontractors to help them with the process. And so, once we make those selections and we, as a board, agree to that, then we will come back to the Board of Supervisors and invite them to a strategic joint meeting, that initial meeting with our consultants, so that we can hear from each of you as to what you'd like to see in this uniquely Pennsylvania County economic development plan. And it will create a better alliance, even tighter alliance, between our two boards, so that your Economic Development Committee and the future planning impacts how you disperse and budget county taxpayer dollars.
Sounds exciting. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your help in guiding us in this process. You, as well as Matt Rowe and Katie Saunders have all been strategic in our decision-making. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want to say.
Go ahead, Ms. Ingram.
You guys do a great job, and I'm very grateful for that. So, thank you very much, Dr. Fawcett.
Thank you, Ms. Ingram. I appreciate you.
Yes, sir. All right. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. We look forward to next time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving to item six A, Horseshoe Road Water Extension Project, the Saddle Road Edition Discussion. Mr. Adcock, welcome, sir.
Good afternoon. Most of you know that we are in the final stages of a Horseshoe Road water line extension project. We have had sixty, more than sixty residents sign up and pay for their connection for that water line, so it's been a a great success. Appreciate the support about that. Recently last month, I was contacted by a resident on Saddle Road who was interested in water, seeing the activity on Horseshoe Road. Saddle Road is a short road just off of Horseshoe Road. I notified the resident that that road was not in the original project, but if there was enough support, I would bring it to the board to see if there was interest in having the connection. So, she initiated a petition, and I've received five petitioners for water service, which basically is almost all the houses from Horseshoe Road to the furthest house on the road. There's a couple other houses beyond, but they did not express any interest on that. In addition, after receiving the petition, I sent out a letter to those customers just to assure or to get some assurance from them that they were interested in paying the same connection fee that we have established for the Horseshoe Road project, which is twenty-seven fifty if financed or twenty-five hundred if paid upfront. So, I did receive three. I had two in the package, but I've received an additional letter with a signature on it saying that they were in agreement to pay the connection fee, and they were interested in signing up.
Okay.
The approximate cost to extend this water line is forty-eight thousand dollars. We are expecting to come in a little under budget on the Horseshoe Road project due to we had some rock budgeted in the initial bid, and we did not encounter as much rock as expected. But we also have some additional funds in the water and sewer fund that we could utilize to pay for this extension. So, what I'm coming to you today to ask for your support to proceed with revising the project to do this extension on Saddle Road. It's a good time to do it because we have a contract currently that we can just do a change order and let this contractor go ahead and knock it out and finish it up. So, if there's any questions about that, I would, otherwise, I'd like to, you know, request that we put it on the agenda for approval of the business meeting.
Any questions, gentlemen? Ms. Ingram, Mr. Scares?
No, I was just going to say, this is in my district, and I'm very grateful with the work that you put into this, and Ms. Kitty Francis was the one that led the charge, and, you know, they were inadvertently left out as far as the overall project. No fault to anyone. It just was that way, but I would surely make a motion that we proceed forward with this because they need water like everybody else.
Any more questions? Thank you, Ms. Ingram.
Thank you.
Good. Mr. Dudley?
Yes, sir. Chris, you said it was sixty already signed up, correct?
Yeah, over sixty have signed up for that.
How many total will this serve?
It's still in the works, but it was anticipated to be about sixty residents.
Okay.
That, so there, and actually, there's, there's, there is a lot of ones that have signed up that weren't part of that sixty, so I think that we'll do, I've done two letters to kind of notify them that, hey, this is happening. You had indicated that you wanted to be involved.
Yeah.
It's time to move, so I think we'll give them another six to eight months at this, you know, reduced rate before we implement the other ones. So, I kind of, I think we'll end up with more than what we anticipated originally for the project.
Thank you, sir.
I'm for this project, but I just wonder, going to be any stagnation issues with just that one arm coming off of Horseshoe? Or do you have any ideas of whether you're going to put a bleeder valve or something in?
You know, being it's just a short, and what we can do with short extensions, we do a bigger pipe, and then we put a hydrant, and then we reduce down to a smaller pipe for those last couple of residents, so I expect, you know, some decent turnover. We have one user at the end, so we're extending to the last resident that has expressed interest, so we'll have that use right on the end of the line, and then, you know, we will do a blow-off at the end of the line so that we can flush if necessary. Yep, it's a little bit different than longer extensions where you do have a big turnover issue.
Ms. Ingram, you made the recommendation as a motion. We need a second on that.
I'll second it.
Second, Mr. Scares. Any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman, the motion is that this be moved to business meeting.
Yes, sir. All right. We've got a motion to send it to the business meeting, seconded by Mr. Scares. Any more discussion? If not, we're ready to vote.
I'll go get them. Let me get ready to get clothes. I got another pair.
Thank you. Passes and go to the business meeting. Moving to item six B, Ameresco County Facility Improvement Funding Discussion. Mr. Adcock, you're up.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Over the last year, Ameresco, an energy efficiency company, has been performing an investment-grade audit of all county buildings. This I G. A. performs a very detailed investigation into energy use and develops proposed measures that can provide improvements to the facilities while saving energy expenses that can be used to help pay for the building improvement measures. County staff has reviewed the completed I G. A. and identified certain measures that provide the greatest benefit to the county, improve the conditions and comfort issues inside our facilities, and address some of the significant deferred maintenance issues that, if left unaddressed, could cause some significant maintenance problems. I have some representatives from Ameresco here this evening, Garrett Raper and Jay Sellers, and they're going to give a brief overview of the project and some of their, discuss some of their findings.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Hi. Thank you very much. We appreciate the opportunity to come and present this to you this afternoon. My name is Garrett Raper. Jay Sellers, we were the engineers on this project. I guess if I hold it the right way, it works better. Thank you, sir. Just a brief overview, and this is in your board packet, but a brief overview of Ameresco and our corporate structure, you know, the folks who have worked on this job, Jay, Mike Saylor, and myself, but you can see that, you know, it's a large company that's ready to come out and not only do these types of surveys, but also implement the work as we move forward if you so see fit. Our understanding was there were twenty buildings, the, a lot of infrastructure need. A couple of goals, one was to find as much energy savings as was practical, and then also identify and address capital needs within the facility, and Jay's going to go over each and every one of those. So, what we found were some older inefficient lighting systems. The county has taken care of a lot of those on their own, and you'll see that in there as well. A lot of mechanical equipment failures, thermal comfort issues, in other words, just uncomfortable places to be in. We found systems that were not operating properly, you know, deferred maintenance issues just due to the age, and quite frankly, they were just getting too old to be able to maintain any further. And then, no building automation system, which was able to control the HVAC systems and actually drive some sorts of energy savings and thermal comfort. Ameresco typically works under what's called an energy savings performance contracting model, which is also what we're showing here, where the savings from the projects that we identify are guaranteed by Ameresco, and those savings are used to help pay for the projects. A lot of the projects we do are actually completely funded by savings, but we did find so many capital needs here that the savings we identified were not able to completely fund those. However, there is a portion of the work that is funded directly by the energy savings that are generated by the project, which reduces the amount that the county needs to come up with separately. This just describes how we do the I G. A. You know, it's an engineering study. We've installed data logging equipment in there. So, you know, the thermal issues, the lighting hours, those are things we log with data loggers, not things we use as rule of thumb. A baseline summary here, this basically breaks down per building how much energy consumption and what the costs are per year. That's required for any energy project, and we're happy to dig into any of these things, but we want to respect your time today. So, what does the project that we bring to you accomplish? First off, as Mr. Adcock mentioned, you know, we identified a lot of a lot of different scope. We've already worked with him and other county staff to pare this down to what makes the most sense. That's about a four-point-three-nine million dollar project. Two-point-three million of those are what we would consider pretty much purely capital improvements. There's a cost savings in year one of forty-nine thousand dollars, which represents about thirteen percent of the energy budget within these buildings. So, you know, although there's a lot of capital work, that's still a good bit of reduction. And then, there's environmental benefits as well, mainly ninety-six metric tons of carbon dioxide, which is represented by those savings. tons of carbon dioxide, which is represented by those savings. Oh, I'll turn it over from here. So base project recommendations, Jay's going to go through these, but a lot of HVAC equipment, building automation system installations, HVAC upgrades specifically at the courthouse and the Martin Building. This at the top shows all the different energy conservation measures that we looked at and then the final project that we're submitting today is, is by the X. So you can kind of see per building what was done in each, in each building. Jay?
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your time. Controls upgrade, we looked at, there's some antiquated control systems out there that's running the buildings twenty-four seven, which means there's additional heating and cooling going on that is really needed when people are not in the building. So the controls upgrade will help take care of that and bring it back down to running and maintaining temperature during occupied times. Variable refrigerant flow system at the Moses Building. This is the one that's kind of critical because of the current design of the equipment. You pretty much have heating all the time or cooling. It's just, the building's very uncomfortable. It's been that way for a long time. There's no way to control the heat. Heat rises up to the third floor. It's becoming, it's very uncomfortable for all the, all the occupants. So we were looking at replacing that system with a VRF. Individual, individual units will be installed throughout the spaces to provide heating and cooling to those areas of the building. Window replacements, also at the, at the Moses Building, to help bring up those antiquated windows, more energy efficient, low E glass windows, but also still maintain the, the integrity of the building on the look. Boiler replacements. There's currently an outdated electrical boiler at the admin building we're looking to replace with a gas-fired unit and with current rates and everything, there's actually energy savings associated with that. Inlet guide vanes. There are units that are, are running at full speed even though they can be set back at part load conditions. And this, the VFD will allow those motors, variable frequency drive, allow those motors to slow down according to loads within the building. Here's where we get our capital improvements. At the admin building, the Martin Building, the, the units up top are pretty much outside their useful life. During inspection, we saw that there's significant damage to the outside units. There's hail damage, coil damage. They're not working as well. There's been a lot of, a lot of maintenance issues with those, with replacing compressors and things of that nature. Very similar at the human services building, health services building. Those units are becoming outdated, antiquated multiple times where they've had to replace compressors. It's just an additional cost. It's just troublesome for the unit. In which case, when those units go down, it's whole areas of the building that can no longer provide thermal comfort. The last one is the courthouse. Where we investigated is that the system at the courthouse has become very antiquated. The piping within the building is becoming so old that sections have failed and you can't even look through the pipe. That's how corroded it is. We've gone through the area where the ledgers are kept. We're seeing failures on the pipe. We're seeing corrosion and deterioration in the piping systems. So we're looking at replacing those, including an outdated rooftop unit on the roof. It looks like it's almost been there fifty, sixty years. We're outside its useful life. To replace all that equipment with a, a new VRF system, very similar to what we proposed at the Moses Building, to provide heating and cooling capacity at the same time, simultaneous as people needed to maintain thermal comfort. These are some of the next steps.
Yes, so the next steps, if you improve tonight, we, we do need a couple of weeks to finalize the project scope. Any, any things the board may, won't enter out of the project. We're also continuing to work with, with Chris and the county if this moves forward to, to fund the project. That would be through, through a loan. You know, Ameresco will continue working with the county because these energy savings projects are, are a little bit different animal than, than, than general funding and, you know, we have specialists that can help with that. And then about six weeks to finalize the contract documents and, and have that ready for approval as well would be our proposed next steps. And we appreciate your time, Chris.
Any questions for these guys while they're up here?
Any questions, gentlemen?
As they mentioned, one of the buildings that's been identified for some significant upgrades is the Moses Building, which is currently, as everyone knows, is being used by the sheriff's department for their offices. Almost all the windows currently have window units. So there's a, you know, boiler heat, window unit, air conditioning, which is not very efficient. We're seeing some infiltration of water through these, these windows that are creating some, some damage to the walls. And I, I think Sheriff Taylor was going to be here.
He is back here.
To, to, to support, if he wants, if he wants to say a few things, but he can, he can vouch for the, the conditions in there and the, you know, these, these VRFs units will help to, to, to control the, the heating and cooling so it's much more comfortable. You can control individual spaces. We have a lot of, of rooms and buildings in the county where someone's hot, so we have the air conditioning up, but then we have another person down the hall who's got a, a, a space heater under their desk during, you know, July because they, it's, it's too cold in their room. So this addresses a lot of issues that, that, we're hoping to address a lot of issues at the same time that we would have to go and do individual projects. We would, by utilizing Ameresco, Ameresco has, has cooperative contracts through, through a lot of federal sources that allow us to utilize them and stay within our procurement requirements. They are a kind of a design build company, so they do the upfront, the identification of the projects. They, they measure the energy consumption, but they also act as the general contractor to, to oversee all of these, all these construction projects. We have identified about four-hundred thousand dollars in unused ARPA funds that can be utilized to pay for the human services building portion of this project because it is, it is an accepted usage for that. And then I have talked to Kim Vanderhyde, finance-wise. We are looking at about a fifteen-year term for this project because we feel like the, that if we go out further than that, that's, it's, it's outliving the life of the improvements. So looking at a fifteen-year term, our annual payment is approximately three-hundred-and-seventy-five to four-hundred thousand that would have to be budgeted. But we are taking care of a lot of significant infrastructure improvements with this project. Human Services Building, the Martin Building Boiler, the Moses Building and controls in almost all the other county buildings. And the, the controls are pretty significant. I think a lot of the, the cost savings that we're seeing in energy are based on putting new controls in. I mean, you, you have older thermostats that don't, do not allow you to, say somebody turns it down because they feel hot one day, so they turn it down to sixty-eight. Well, they forget to turn it back up when they leave, so it's, it's running at sixty-eight all night, so we're, we're losing money. These new controls will allow us to set schedules so that, you know, it automatically pops on at, at five, six in the morning, so the building is very thermally good for the, for the employees when they come in and then it pops off when, when quitting time occurs so that we're not heating and cooling a, a large structure overnight. So I would like to ask the board, you know, for approval of this project to allow us to move forward, understanding that we, you know, we'll have to budget this money with our, through our building and grounds budget to, to, over the next fifteen years to pay for it.
Just one quick question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
On, on the capital improvements, these HVACs, units, how accurate are those numbers right now or they just estimates?
For the cost?
Yeah.
I think they're, they're pretty accurate, right? Would you? Yeah, they've, so they've actually bid it to a couple of subcontractors.
Good, perfect.
What they've given us, I, I think is, is, they call it their final audit, so.
Okay. I'm good.
Go ahead, Ms. Ingram.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Why did you put the, one building over top of the other? It just looked like my experience, the Moses Building would be the most needed.
Uh, well, we, we, we're included in all of them in this project. The, the Moses Building, so that's just, that's probably just the order it's listed, but all of those projects are, are included in this.
You're talking simultaneously.
Sir.
Simultaneously, you mean?
Yes. Yeah, well, they may not be constructed simultaneously, but they'll be, all be included in the project.
Of course, I, I might be partial. I used to work in that building, but I remember when they got rid of all the asbestos and mold and, and, you know, I still hear horror stories about that building in contrast to the, uh, Human Services Building. So that's why I was asking. Thank you, Chris.
Yes, sir.
Any more questions?
I just have one. Ms. Vanderhyde, are you comfortable that we have this in building and grounds going forward over the next fifteen years?
We just have to put it in the budget this year, so it'll be hard by that purpose. So I think once it gets in there, it's pretty much a day to do. And of course, we're going to have debt that'll fall off each year from somewhere that's all part of the plan to be finalized. So you may, you may not see a lot of that, but one of the thousand dollars being in the total.
Well, that's what I wanted to hear you say. I just wanted you to remind the public that we had debt rolling off. When is the payments due to start? Are they going to start within this budget year or would the payments?
Probably not. So the two options that we will get so far, Bank of America and the financial.
I checked with PFM, they're our financial advisors, and they say that a lot of banks are very interested in, in energy projects, they still are. Bank of America being one of the number one banks for doing that. Their interest rate currently is about four-point-three percent would be our rate and that's a tax-exempt fifteen-year loan. So that would put you at the higher end of that funding. We could also go through Virginia Resources Authority, but that's a pool that it's only done twice a year. So we've, we've missed the window for fall funding because that application was due the first week of August. We can do the same thing we did with our landfill if we choose to do the Virginia Resources Authority and apply for the screen funding. That doesn't mean the project couldn't go, get underway. We would just pass a reimbursement resolution for us to be able to pay ourselves back with that funding when it came in. So we would apply in February and receive the money by end of May, but we probably would not be making our first payment and it would just be a partial payment in twenty-five.
Okay. One other question. Did we check on the fact that we're going to be reducing emissions and everything else to see if there was any incentives or grants out there for a project like this because a lot of stuff out there right now for green?
We can look into it. We haven't in finance. We just looked at the finance.
We always look at grants for capital items, but we can take another look at that.
Well, I think it'd be really wise to dev into the green energy portion to see if there's, we don't want to miss any funding if somebody's willing to give it to us.
Right.
You mentioned one of the finance options does, i- is, is supported by the green energy project, right? Does that give us a better rate than when you, you said Bank of America is interested in the, do they give us a better rate?
I'm sure that it would or it could not stand a song. Hopefully not a lot with the state of where we are in the country.
Well, let, let's remember that, that was some incentives like that out there when we had the school bonds and we kept being just the, you know, one spot out of getting those and we kept kicking the can, not us, but the prior boards kept kicking the can down the road and that's why we ended up extending that debt and prolonging the service of that debt so long. So just a reminder for everybody to be cautious, you know, trying to, trying to save a little interest is wonderful and I'm all for it, but, you know, servicing debt is important too to keep the county financially safe.
I've got a question on it. Does projects go to be like four-point-three million, is that correct?
Yeah, that's the total.
Is that what the county would have to put up?
Yes, sir, that's, that's the total that would be, be financed, yes, sir.
So we got four-point-three we want to put up and you say we're going to save forty-nine thousand a year?
Right, energy savings.
I mean, the first ten years, we ain't saved but half a million dollars. So it'd take eighty years to pay this back.
Well, based on.
Based on forty-nine thousand.
Yes, sir. And that's what, that's what, what he mentioned before is that, you know, some projects that they do, that they look at, certainly their, the energy savings pays for the entire project, but we're looking at a bunch of capital improvement projects that have been kind of needed that we think, you know, that we're, we're a boiler or failure away from having to do it anyway. We're an air handler failure away from having to do it anyway. So we're addressing a lot of capital needs with this project as well as the energy efficiency needs. So that's why we're having to, so that savings is, is built into, so it's reducing our, our debt service payment.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Mr. Tucker?
Thank you. And, and thank you, Mr. Warren, because that was what I wanted, was some type of financial overview. I'm in favor of the capital improvements, but I would like to see, Ms. Vanderhyde, if you could maybe get something down and make a presentation to us in terms of the better route to go in terms of how we're going to service that debt going forward. And also to Bob's other point, with the Inflation Reduction Act, there should be a lot of green energy grants out there that might be available to offset the expense to the county. So I am in favor of those capital improvements, one hundred percent, but, but I think we should take a moment and get our kind of ducks in a row and make a crisp presentation in terms of an overview on the financials and then I'll be prepared to vote yes.
Do you see any negatives in delaying it a month to, so we can get all the proper data? Has that negatively impacted you guys?
No, no issue with them, they say.
Okay.
You know, and I wanted to highlight again, you know, to your, your concern about the, the energy efficiency, but we're, you know, we're, we're addressing a lot of it and I think Sheriff Taylor could probably speak on this behalf, a lot of just thermal, you know, building quality issues that, you know, we, lots of times, you know, in the Martin Building in the morning, especially in the springtime and the fall, you know, and you're well aware, Mr. Dalton, Chairman Dalton, that we come in, you know, it's, it's, it's expected to be warm, but it's, it's cold because we had just a, a cold snap. We had to run over and, and fire up the boiler, you know, I, these things, and sometimes it takes hours before it gets comfortable in, in some of the, the facilities. This will helpfully address a lot of that, just comfort issues, thermal issues. And so I, I, I do understand that there's a concern, but we feel like that we're addressing a lot of capital issues that we would have to otherwise, you know, probably have an architect come in and design something for us or have another company come in and design something, individually take it to bid. And, and with this project, we're able to, to kind of combine all of these projects into one big basket and, and just to handle it at one time and then have them, Ameresco, do that as, as our GC. Thank you, though. Appreciate it.
Any more questions? Thank you all.
Thank you.
Make sure that we put it back on work session next month and have, you know, numbers that you can see and how that'll look compared to the debt we currently have and moving forward.
Mr. Chairman, can they, can they do everything possible to find out as much information as you can? I know we're on a short timeframe with thirty days about what the potential is out there for some assistance on green.
Yeah, we'll look into it.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Moving to item six C. General rezoning public hearing notice, advertising and signage discussion. Ms. Ragsdale, welcome.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff was asked to come to work session today to give you an overview of our public notice requirements and advertising requirements for public hearings relating to rezoning cases. State code outlines the requirements for these, how citizens' adjacent properties are notified as well as the general public. Staff is required to note of, notice the public hearing in a newspaper for two consecutive weeks prior to each public hearing. So we do this prior to the Planning Commission public hearing. We then do this again prior to the Board of Supervisors public hearing. So those are advertised in the Star Tribune for the two Wednesdays prior to those two meetings. Additionally, staff sends out certified letters to all adjacent property owners. Additionally, staff sends out certified letters to all adjacent property owners, adjacent property owners across roads. So, we view adjacent property owners from a property across the street. So, for that example, the Axon Project, we notified all property owners across fifty-eight even. They did receive certified letters. So, staff has the receipt from the certified letter, and then we get the card back when that citizen has signed for their letter, or the post office will make, I think it's three attempts to deliver the letter. On the last attempt, they leave a notice on the door saying that you have a certified letter that you need to pick up from the post office. And it does say who it's from, because a lot of times for other things, we'll get calls saying, "Why have you all sent me a certified letter?" So, it's their responsibility at that point to pick it up from the post office. If they don't within a certain period of time, the post office then sends it back to us, and it's marked unclaimed. We keep all of these things in our files for the case. So, if at any question, there's a question about whether or not someone was sent a letter, we do have documentation of who received letters, who signed for them, and whose letters came back unclaimed. Additionally, we go above state code, and we require that the applicant post the property with a sign. We have sign requirements on the height of the sign, how far it can be off of the road the right of way. We provide those signs, so my office actually fills out the sign. It states the, it's probably about a two-by-three sign. We provide the posts and the sign. The Planning Commission public hearing information is on the sign, the date and the time for that meeting, as well as the Board of Supervisors' public hearing information, date and time. Those are posted on each property within the application. They have to be visible from the right of way. If the property does not have any road frontage, we make them post on adjacent property lines, and that's just the requirement of our ordinance. So, again, all these things are done in accordance with state code, except for the signage, and that is something that we do above what state code requires. So, I'm happy to take any questions that the board may have.
Mr. Ingraham.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm the culprit that brought this up, and there's been a couple of cases, and one last year that Emily and I talked about, and the most recent being the South Side. And I just felt like with some of the concerns and complaints of citizens, that maybe we should do a better job. And part of that was the notice maybe running it a little bit long, and if I understood you correctly, the cost factor goes back to the applicant. So, to me, that's a good thing. So, extend the advertising period if you could do that. As far as the notice, I didn't know until I talked to you one day last week that the residents across a roadway would get a registered letter. I was always thought, led to believe that it was just the adjacent property owner, so I thought that was a good thing. South Side, that wouldn't be possible because it's only twenty-four properties that touched that piece of property, but within a mile radius is over twenty-three hundred properties. And as far as the signs, you know, again, I've heard this since I've been on the board, bigger signs. So, I don't know if we could invest in a poly kind of fiber, like a political sign, four-by-eight or something like that, that would be reusable, universal. But, yeah, I hear bigger signs a lot, so that would be some of my suggestions.
And staff has done some benchmarking regarding localities surrounding us and in Virginia. A lot of them are actually reducing the size of the sign to make reusable signs. They are using more of a real estate-sized sign that have generic information that the locality puts up. So, right now, we put that responsibility on the applicant. These signs are reusable. They state that a rezoning application has been submitted on this property. For more information, please contact, you know, Community Development Office, for example, to get more information regarding the case. Franklin County, that is what they have done recently. They have gone from the sign similar to what we currently use to the smaller sign. If that's something that we, if we do use reusable signs, that would eliminate the ability for staff to put case information, but that would give us the ability to make them brighter, more visible, so that they catch people's eye. Right now, we use just generic white signs. They don't hold up very well. We try to laminate them, but, you know, they're out for two months for most cases. And so, they, you know, the wind blows them down, and that's what we're gonna run into with larger signs, is they're probably gonna be blown down more, they're gonna be harder to maintain. If we could get sturdier, more visible signs, and maybe a fluorescent color, that may be able to address some of the issues about visibility and not noticing the signs. But, we're happy to take recommendations from the board as to what you would like for us to look into as we move forward.
Well, I did wanna add that y'all do a great job, and you do it in accordance with law, and many times I see you go above and beyond. So, if citizens feel like they're getting left out, no disrespect, but sometimes people just miss it, and life is busy. So, but thank you for what you do.
Thanks, Mr. Ingraham. Some more questions?
I think it might be a good idea to have some, you and your staff, to give us some concepts of signs that could be possible. I think it'd be really important to include a link, the information for a link, so they can go and get the detailed information that you're not gonna put on a sign that's transferable all over the place.
And staff had internally talked about the possibility of a QR code or something that would take them to a link on the website that would provide all the information about the case. And, you know, of course, all of our contact information would be there so they could reach out to staff at any time for questions, but we'll be happy to provide some concepts.
I mean, that's the way we're heading, so we might as well get on board with it.
Yeah, a QR code would be a good idea. You can just look it up on your phone, get all your information, use the same sign for every case. I mean, that's, might be a good idea, I don't know. But I know y'all figured it out.
Can you bring us some samples back?
We can. Staff will do that.
Okay. Thank you for your time. Moving to item seven, business meeting discussions. Mr. Hunt, did we have any, sir?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. Moving to item eight, closed session. Mr. Hunt, can you read us into closed session?
Sure. We have two closed sessions topics tonight. First one is discussion or consideration of acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Legal authority, Virginia Code Section 2.2, thirty-seven-eleven A three. Subject matter, property acquisition, hurt property, purpose, review, discussion regarding the same. The second are two legal matters, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Legal authority, Virginia Code Section 2.2, thirty-seven-eleven A eight. Subject matter, South Side housing development rezoning, fire and rescue service agreement, purpose, consultation with legal counsel slash legal advice and discussion regarding the same. We need a motion, a second, any discussion, and a vote to go into closed session, please.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. I'd entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So, move.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Any discussion? If not, we're ready to vote. Closed session. Thank you, y'all.[1125.48]
Yes, sir.
We return to open session at 6:08. Be it resolved that at the Pittsavanna County Board of Supervisors work session on August 15, 2023, the board hereby certifies by recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorized the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. If any board member believes that there was a departure from the requirements of the act, he shall so state prior to the vote indicating the substance of the departure. The statement shall be recorded in the board's minutes. I will now do a roll call. Mrs. Eames?
Yes.
Mr. Ingram?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Dalton?
Yes.
It is now appropriate, Chairman, if there's no other business, to adjourn the work session, and we will reconvene at 7:00 PM for the business meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Meeting's adjourned.